Welcome everyone, it is 7:35 on Tuesday, July 30th, 2024. It's the Warren Township High School School Board Meeting. As we start all our open sessions, if we could all stand up and recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Board Secretary Natalia Martinez could not make it tonight, and the school code calls for the board to appoint a secretary pro tem whenever the secretary is absent. With that being said, I move the board appoint Beth Pope as secretary pro tem for the purpose of tonight's meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson, Mr. Demonte.
Yes.
Mrs. Squires.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Pope.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Six yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Any changes to tonight's agenda? If not, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Anderson, Mrs. Pope.
Yes.
Mrs. Squires.
Yes.
Mr. Demonte.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Six yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is our time for public comment. I do not see any visitors, but it does not prohibit anybody if they would like to address the board. They're more than welcome to approach the podium and address the board. As I said, let's move forward. Onto the superintendents' reports.
So, real quick, I have a written report in there. I don't have any, if anybody has any questions about those items. Also, I want to note that this week I met with, in addition to what was in the written report this week, I met with the superintendents from our feeder school districts, and we did decide to formally set a date for me to go visit their school board and talk about what's going well with the partnership, areas for improvement, some possible future considerations for partnerships. Increased partnership with them is something I think we've generally talked about here, and so we're finalizing some dates, and I'll get those too. And if you'd like to attend with me, I think the superintendents from those school districts were interested in just a conversation-type agenda item with the other school boards. So I'll keep you updated on that.
You just met with the superintendent?
Sorry, say that again.
You just met with the superintendent, not the board?
Correct, correct. Then, I think I'm going to cede some time over to Dr. Carner, who's here from the Regional Office of Education. We talked about having him come in and do, just give us an overview of the services the ROE provides. Also, I know you had some questions, and we're just interested in how the Safe School Program there works, because we do have students, Warren students that attend there. So I did, we did hunt down a clicker for you here. Mike is a really great resource. I didn't know him before I came here, but it's just been a real pleasure being able to work with him, and the amount of support that schools here in Lake County get from the regional office and from Dr. Carner is really, really cool, and one of the great things about working here in the county, so.
Thanks. If you have any questions, feel free to ask them, but I just wanted to give you just some of the basic things that we do, and then a lot of the new supports and programs that we put in that not only helped like District 121, but other schools across the county, so.
Perfect.
This, for some of you, you might remember, the old Safe School used to be in Zion, used to be at the old Pierce campus before they tore that down. Then we moved into Grace Missionary Church, and I was actually there as the principal. And during COVID, we had decided that'd be better to, you know, save money, consolidate everything into one space. So we moved all of our operations, our professional development, that was at Lake County Tech Campus. We had the office at the permit facility off of Winchester in 2020, I'm sorry, Winchester in 21, and then the Safe School moved up here into Vernon Hills. So we have the front of the building is all of our ROE operations, truancy, everything with that, and on the backside is our Safe School. Just so you know, just as review, we conduct health, life, safety visits every single year. So our goal is to have those done at the latest by October, at the very latest, you know, early November. And we visit every public school, and you know, the charter school, sped co-ops, everything in Lake County, and do that every year, provide feedback to districts on potential issues that we see so that then they could use that for health, life, safety, or just things they need to be on the lookout for. And I can tell you, every year, it's usually like the same things that districts have potential issues with. So we actually put out something last year saying here are like the top things that were noticed last year in violations. These are, I think, school districts, one of the most fun things that they enjoy us coming to do besides the compliance visits, which you all just recently had that, and I'm sure you loved that as well. But those compliance visits are done on a four-year basis, and we've really made sure to beef those up. We have more people doing those now, and I think they've been better for districts, and we've tried to make them more just compliant and informative than we have in the past. And then also, we do all the building permits for schools. So anytime you have to do construction, you do it through our office. Obviously, you don't pay any money. That's like the big benefit of the ROE. Some of the other areas we assist, just so you know, so every year when you apply for your school maintenance project grant, they come to my office. We approve those and send those off to the state board. We approve all the public school calendars, health, life, safety surveys, do things with the remote learning plans if you have that, ALOP programs, which you also have. You're one of the few in Lake County that's been grandfathered in for that, so that's great that you receive funding for that. Then every year, you're turning your AFRs into us. I sign off on those and then send those to the state board. School treasurer bonds, and I know you, I know you know that last year that changed with the actual percentage that you needed to be properly bonded, but we also, to make it more compliant, send out like a calculation sheet too, just so we know, because when I first started, I did not know what if everybody was properly bonded. So did that after my first year, and then made sure everybody was in compliance. So that helped out and protected not only you, but myself. And then we serve as a national board certified teacher liaison, do things with work permits and aid certificates, and then reading recovery is a program that's in some of the elementary schools still in Lake County. We have licensure, we take about 15,000 calls or contacts every single year with individuals who want to be teachers, substitutes, looking to be a paraprofessional, add something to endorsement. We help with that, do rush orders sometimes for districts if they're trying to get someone hired quickly. We also have fingerprinting and background for all substitutes, and then we also offer that for school districts where they can send their employees. Majority of school districts now have that at their actual local school, so that's not heavily as utilized, but it is for subs mainly. And then we are the overseers, I have GED, HSE, but it's now the Illinois High School Diploma. So we house all the records for that for every student that has obtained that in Lake County. And they always can come to us to get that when they're, you know, coming back potentially to do college or jobs.
Can you just, real quick, explain what you just described? We would traditionally call a GED certificate, it's something new now, can you re-explain that to us?
Yes, so last year, the state changed the GED to Illinois High School Diploma. So basically, so you know, if a student were, like if they did, if they dropped out of high school and then they completed their actual, you know, requirements to actually graduate per se, they wouldn't graduate from Warren, but they would have gotten an old way in, a GED. but they would have gotten an old way in a GED. Now, let's say if they were to drop out and they, maybe they had a few requirements that they still had to complete, it's now called the Illinois High School Diploma. So, there's, there's not as much differentiation. So, if I was applying for a job, let's say Danny got like his degree from Warren Township High School. It says, you know, Warren Township High School District, mindset GED, so for some people that, you know, when they're applying for a job, they were worried that they might not be able to get the job, even though they have the high school diploma. Well, now it's just all high school diploma. So, now it says State of Illinois, and they've also created some alternative routes too, so that if you actually got a lot of your schooling done during your freshman, sophomore, junior year, and maybe even dropped out your senior, you can take some of those courses or requirements that you met and apply it towards that and then might have to do less work or just take the actual equivalency exams, basically. So, the state still has to do a better job of clarifying this on their website, because it's overseen by the Illinois Community College Board.
Where do they go take classes?
So, a few options. One, we have a partnership with CLC, so a lot of the testing is done there. Some might do it online. Others, you know, if they might have done homeschool, for example, they might go this route to actually have, you know, something. Even though you can, as a homeschool student, still apply for colleges, but that's usually the the main route that individuals take.
Question on the fingerprinting, because I know, like, you say substitute teachers, I know they go in different places. And when you guys do fingerprinting, is it a point in time that you're checking? Or, because in healthcare, we have like a fee app where it's a perpetual background check, so.
So, usually what happens, let's pretend I was gonna, I was gonna be a substitute, so I go to get my substitute license. That very day, basically, when they apply for it, if they don't have it, that's when we're running the fingerprint and background check. And then usually, you know, some districts might do extra, but the thing is, there is no, like, if there's hits, we'll get notifications at our office and then we would notify districts, but there is no, you know, like, thing where they're gonna keep running it, you know, constantly. And one of the issues, and this has been brought up, is maybe I work here, maybe I work at Zion, et cetera. You know, there's been some talk like, why can't everybody just share it? You know, like, if I pass my fingerprint background at Zion Bennett High School, and then I decide to move over to Warren, why can't it just be shared? And it's usually because they want to make sure they rerun that and to protect, you know, a school district in case an incident occurred from that time of employment to the new time.
Because in healthcare, we have, you know, once you take a fee app, it follows you, and it's a perpetual notification system. And I just, I don't understand why we haven't implemented that in schools because of, you know, the substitute teachers that go back and forth or in different counties.
Yeah, and like, we, we do have a wider network now that we've been wanting some new software too. So, we're implementing that, that this year as well, so that might also be one of the things that we can also look into as well.
But it could be, not to continue on, but as you advocate at maybe a state level, if all licensed educators have to be in Ellis, there could be some tie-in there with that system. If there's a hit, generally, I know there's some interpretation that the local district could do, but then it would at least be on, I guess, think maybe bigger than even Lake County as you meet with other regional superintendents. We have these databases statewide that seem to not do more than what, they're one-trick ponies, and it would be nice if they did a little more.
Correct. I a hundred percent agree with you. One of the other things to talk about Ellis, they are at the state level starting to update all their backend software now too. Some of the things are like I-WAS for those, you know, or probably twenty years old. They're in the process right now of putting out basically a new I-WAS this year probably too. And I can tell you too, legislators also have looked at other things with regards to background checks over the past few years and potentially proposing legislation on this as well. Bus driver trainings, so we do all the initial recertification of bus drivers. We always host those at our office, but we've also branched out and hosted them in local districts as well. So, they have to do the recert every single year, and then the initial is basically like a two-day course. And as you might have heard, we, we offered much more courses the past few years, just because, you know, at the end of COVID, everybody was struggling with bus drivers, so we had added more courses. We have, we probably run in almost two to three or more a week every night, to be honest. And they've also made some new rules federally that made it tougher with like the CDLs. Just, so you know, also, we do things with McKinney-Vento. So, in Lake County, you probably have about eighteen hundred students identified as homeless. And then if any district has students that are identified as homeless, we have resources that we can put forth towards those individuals as well. And then we also oversee things with preschool, early childhood, and work with the Early Childhood Coalition.
What was that number, eighteen hundred?
Yeah, I would say eighteen hundred. The year before, it was, it's wound up about two to three hundred a year, so. It might be even closer this year, maybe to twenty-one hundred, to be honest, so. Attendance and truancy, we oversee, we have a truancy officer for Lake County. And so, you know, at the local school district, you have to have your policy in place and go through that process. And once you, you know, go through the steps, it's usually about three steps at the local school districts, then you can refer them to truancy. And then we have gotten more funding from the State Board of Education, the governor's office, and have put that into providing more supports, whether it be mental health. We've paid for things with regards to transportation for districts if they've had issues with, you know, potentially getting a student on a cab or maybe a bus, tutoring, credit recovery, mentoring. We basically will come up with any solution to try to ensure that the student is back in the school. It's obviously more challenging at the high school level, and we've been really hitting hard elementary. But, you know, we, it's ages six to seventeen, so it's obviously challenging as you get up to like a junior in high school. Our Educational Services Division is everything we do with professional development, so we do administrator academies. So, administrators can knock off that requirement. They have to take one every single year for the recertification. We also have different workshops throughout the year. We started two years back, a, like, a Lake County Leadership Academy, and we've probably had about forty-four educators in Lake County go through it, and I'd say about twenty percent of them have landed some type of administrator job. And basically, what we've done with that is taken different administrators, whether it's the superintendent, student services, HR, you know, business manager, curriculum instruction, deans, principals, had them come in and speak with them, done a book study and had someone lead that. We've also done things with like the Safety Conference, as you know, which we've hosted here the past few years, which has been awesome. It's continued to grow every single year. I think it's some of the, one of our professional development sessions that everybody loves in Lake County. And we also, if you remember, did our Splash Institute. That was a summer institute here. And then actually, we moved that into the school year last year, and I brought back like the Countywide Institute Day. For some of you who've been around for a while, you might know that they used to have it at Great America before my time. It was back in probably like the nineties of like teaching, but we brought that back. This past year had about twenty-five hundred educators attend. And we anticipate maybe ten to fifteen school districts participating this year, so that will continue to grow. And then the other thing, we just added that this past summer, I have absorbed, for some of you who have heard of Midwest PBIS, they deal with positive behavior intervention supports. I took that over from one of the other ROEs. So, now we're gonna be offering even, you know, low-cost professional development on interventions, trauma-informed, RTI, the whole slew of things that's gonna be cheap for Lake County. We keep our, so you know as well, when we have professional development days, we have it on, based on the EBF system, so like on your tier. So, like, you can, it's very cheap. It's only like four, five hundred bucks, to be honest, for a day of PD. I mean, all of the other counties charge like twelve to eighteen hundred sometimes. I'm not concerned about making money. The toll thing is just making sure we have enough PD so that it's there for educators to take advantage of, but that is gonna be a part of that too, so.
Ask a question.
Yeah.
Just curiosity question. Why are professional development sessions held at the tech campus? And let me preface it, and you'll know why I'm asking. So, I work in education. I've taken through the years professional development there where I can check in, but then I have to walk through the building in this age of like emphasizing school security and safety. We still have, in this county, we still have all the good PDs, but they're like not even at the front of the building. Like, you have to walk down the long hallway, go in, I'm mixed around kids, kids are coming from different districts, they don't know me. It just seems odd that there wouldn't be a shift in the same way that the row moved to Vernon Hills for better service, that somehow PD would be taken out of where day-to-day op school operations are. So, I'm curious, has there ever been any discussion on that? It doesn't impact Warren, it's just more of a curiosity piece that, and it kind of does. We have sent kids there and we have people, like, yeah, I know their visitor management system, I know you get raptured when you walk in, but it still seems odd.
So, when I, when I first started, we did have our professional development staff there. So, we rented basically, I'd say, one small area of the campus, and if you're, you're correct, we did have, we used the triple room they had in one of the other rooms.
Right.
So, we stopped using them, I would say, basically in about January of twenty-two.
Okay.
And yeah, so, yeah, we don't host anything there. The only thing that are really.
Heard you say that.
That's, I, that's my, I put old picture. That's my fault.
Oh.
We, we were there forever, though, and when we consolidated, we moved over to the ROE. So, the majority of our sessions are now held at our office.
Okay.
It's about like a fifty-person space.
Okay.
And.
Never mind. I thought I heard and I saw that.
Yeah, that, that, that was my fault. I'm picturing.
No, that's my fault. The only positive is the kids in the culinary classes made the food during these workshops. Best thing about going there. Gastro ed. I, it was an authentic assignment for the kids, and it was well-received.
Here is, I was gonna talk about the Safe School Program, and then I'll talk about the base program, the differentiation of the two. So, the Safe School Program is what's been around since the nineties. This stu, school serves grade six to twelve for students who've been put up for expulsion, multiple suspensions. The main students who are sent here, what I've kind of made sure of, are students who've had issues with physical aggression, drugs, weapons. Okay? We have had probably, I'd say, about a ninety percent success rate with grade six to twelve. We have the middle schoolers separated from the high school students. You know, they can be there from anywhere from six months to potentially no more than two years. And that's the program that was in Zion, that's now in Vernon Hills. And, you know, we have social worker, we have multiple teachers, paraprofessionals, a good amount of staff, about twelve educators, I would say, that work there. And, you know, districts pay a usage fee for each day, and then they provide, they pay for transportation. So, it's door-to-door transportation from the house to the school.
And we are, we are consumers of this product, correct?
Yes.
We've used this product.
How many students?
We ended last year with about seventy-six. The number does vary, honestly. So, I can tell you, down back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, you know, we were coming back in personally, we had about twenty students, because it's very hard to get put out for expulsion, you know, when you're virtual, but it still happened. But it ebbs and flows, honestly. We probably hit about, we'll have, I think, to start the year with about thirty this year. Numbers will usually increase potentially October, maybe December, and then they'll slowly increase throughout the year based on each school district's, what's going on, you know, with the individuals there. The whole goal for us is to get them back to you or graduated. So, just to remind you, we give the grades, you, you know, issue the credits at the high school. So, we've had individuals who have been placed there through their senior year that have met all their requirements and then graduated back, returned back to their local high school to graduate locally. And the same thing with eighth graders being promoted, then potentially starting off at their, you know, their new high school for the next year.
And if in two years they're not successful, what, what's the next course?
So, I would say, one, it depends on the student. They can't be there more. You can only play, outplay them, you know, for that long. That could be.
They come back?
Yeah, they, yeah, one, they can come back. You know, we've tried to do some things, depending on the student, you know, looked at like virtual options too. So, there, that, those are things we started to put in place as well. We've only had a few, or we then work with the district. So, if a placement does not work out, we work with the district to try to come up with next steps. Whether that might be, you know, taking the expulsion off of bayance, or maybe there's another, like, a credit recovery or another option as well.
And, and Mike, that's specifically for the up to two-year periods?
Yeah.
But once they hit two years, regardless of the success of that, they come back to us if they're still age appropriate?
The, the base program, we started this back in twenty twenty-one. This is the short-term suspension program. This is for students who have been out of school suspended for four to ten days. So, what we've done with this is take, taken the, almost like the same model as the Safe School. Okay, well, there's a fee of per-day fee, transportation to and from the district, and then they're in their own separate, and we try to keep it maximum of like ten kids in there. But what happens is, let's say, you suspended a student for, let's say, six days. You, as a district, could decide to, instead of keeping them out of school for six days, send them to us. And we usually have about a twenty-four-hour turnaround, usually. You know, it varies on the time of the day. If it's, if a student gets suspended at three PM, it'd be hard to get them in the next day to get the transportation. But if it happened, you know, midday or morning, we could usually accommodate that. But what it does is, it doesn't go against your suspension numbers, because you're still providing services. So, we do an intake meeting and, you know, an exit meeting, meet with like your, usually your dean or whoever your contact is. You send all the work to us, like their schoolwork that needs to be completed, they work on that, and then we work on them with social, emotional behavior. I could say that we've had, this past year, we had thirty-eight districts in Lake County use the program. We've probably had about two hundred kids go through it and probably about five return on a second visit. And it's up to, you know, it's like we say, the district can, you know, offer it to the parents. Not every parent accepts it, but the ones that do have been overall happy with it.
It would be on an offer and acceptance basis, though?
Yeah, you could, you could come up with the decision. For example, you suspended me six days, and you could say, you know, you can either have your six out-of-school suspension days or you could do a placement at the base program for those six days.
If I understand correctly that I'm a student taking English, geography, algebra, whatever, that's my curriculum, and I go to you, you guys will have access to that curriculum and continue what I would have done that five days?
Yes, as long as the district sends it, yes, which they all, which they do. That's one of the things we ensure that, you know, they do. They have, if they need the lunch and breakfast, they get that too, so you'd still receive everything, yeah.
So, some of our student ambassadors in the last year have expressed concerns about our, you know, maybe suspending people here on campus, and they're looking at it as days off or whatever the case is. There's no way we could mandate participate in this program, like.
It could be a local decision.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I can tell you, most have done some type of offering, you know, just like, not every person will take and accept. Like, you could expel a student in abeyance and say, we're gonna send you to the Safe School. Not every parent agrees to that and will say just, you know, expel, so it's kind of like the same, you know, concept. And what I'll say with this is, what I think the benefit is that I've seen, or we've, the reason why we did this was because sometimes, you know, obviously, sometimes you worry about students, depending on the offense that was, you know, committed. And, you know, if they're at home by themselves, is that good for them? Are they gonna get anything accomplished? You know, it varies, right? But then here, you know, they're watched each day. It's a disruption to the routine, because they're being picked up, you know, transportation door-to-door, having to go through our same doors as you would if you were a Safe School student. And for some, that is a, a good thing where they're able to get away, talk through the problem. We work with the district to kind of identify a plan, so that they hopefully can be successful when they return, and it's a change of scenery. And that's what's been nice for individuals.
Have, have we utilized?
We have utilized this in the past. It, I would say, I would put it on the minimal level. We're not regular consumers of this product.
And it, it, you know, it varies, like, some districts have used it multiple times, some have used it maybe a few. You know, it's all like by, you know, like a case-by-case on what the district decides.
Give me for, for delving into this, but how many teachers do you have?
We have, for next year, we'll have twelve staff members.
Because you have anywhere from, I heard twenty-eight to seventy-eight or something. And if this program were utilized, it would seem to me necessitate individual effort with each kid. How can you do that?
So, with, with the, the base program, we have a basically administrator teacher in that room, and since it's a small amount of students, usually on average, I can tell, we've very rarely had it where it's ten in there. On average, it's about four or five. So, then they're working individually with those four or five students. We also have a para that can then go into the room. For our regular Safe School classrooms, we have a teacher per classroom and then a para that would help float, and then we have a social worker too, and then our principal, then our two other facilitators.
Is it, would it be possible for us to visit?
Yeah. You can, you, you just talk, you email me and come visit whenever you want. It's nicer. It's not, it doesn't look dungeon-ish. That's, you know, one of the nice differences, I can tell you.
You have all kinds of things, I'm sure.
Yeah. This, just so you know, I, we have a regional school board of trustees in Lake County. They are hearing petitions on annexations, detachments, separations, or dissolvements, very rarely ever utilized. There hasn't been a case before them. There hasn't been a case before them since, I'd say, about twenty-nineteen. Uh, they would be something that might hear, I mean, obviously, I'm sure you've been aware of the CEDOL with, you know, potentially districts who might pull out of that. This is a case that could be heard in the future. We have, and we're a very developed land-based in Lake County versus some other areas of the state. So, you know, another thing that could happen, which we weren't really here, overall, I don't decide it, but, you know, if you have a house that's right on your border that says, well, I want to be in District One Twenty-One versus District C, they're not gonna take that because the lines are drawn, you know, so. Uh, this, this is something we started back in June of twenty-twenty-two. The old Illinois Virtual Schools that was run by the State Board operated out of Peoria ROE. And we had a lot of districts in Lake County that said they needed some options, or virtual options for their students. And obviously, as most know, it was really hard to dedicate teachers locally, depending on how big your school is, to just teach remotely. So we, uh, well, I created the Illinois Virtual Schools and Academy, and I took all the people who worked at the old one and got private and grant funding for this. Uh, we have served, I'd say, over eight thousand students since June of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, we have a full-time virtual academy that districts can utilize if they have the remote, uh, learning policy passed that has been utilized for students who might have cancer, might have behavior or mental health, or some type of local issue, where they take a full, you know, online, um, course schedule. Uh, we have tutoring, mental health, every support possible. We have teacher shortage solutions, synchronous, asynchronous, credit recovery. I would say, I think we're up to two-hundred-and-fifty-one school districts that have our free partnership agreement. And that is, we always work with the district because we want to ensure that the district's gonna accept, again, the grade that we give so they can assign the credit. Um, we're in the virtual course catalog, so if you had a student, um, who maybe like, we, we work here, uh, I'd say, I think it was a year and a half ago or so, German. We provided German to Warren, and we've continued to expand the foreign languages. But we're in the course catalog, which allows if I'm a student here and I had to take, you know, A P Computer Science, or maybe a course you didn't offer and you wanted them to take it, you could pay for it at district. As long as they pass, then you get reimbursed. So we've, uh, the General Assembly has a million dollars every single year available for the virtual course catalog. And then, just so you can see, uh, we are partnering with University of Illinois as well. We're getting close to three million dollars to, uh, do a, like, um, some, they're gonna help us with some innovative courses, expand our catalog, but the big thing is providing a on-the-ground boot support for districts who might do like a teacher shortage solution. What I mean by that is, they don't have the teacher in the classroom, they're utilizing us, but we're paying the local district a stipend to potentially a paraprofessional or teacher. So we're gonna pilot that around the state. Um, we got recognized by the ASU G S V Conference, and we just finished our K to eight summer boot camp this past summer. We did a virtual math and reading for kindergarten through eighth graders that they could, districts paid for, they get reimbursed, they took it. Um, my kids were in, I had my kids do it. Last year, we offered it for free to everybody in Lake County and had five hundred kids. This year, we probably had about a thousand. So we've tried to find different ways because not every district offers in-person summer school. So our goal with this is to continue to expand foreign language, uh, career tech education, and those courses to ensure that no matter what zip code you are, you still have access. Because in Lake County, we're very blessed, but if you go further away from I eighty in the state, you would find that very few schools have A P courses or might have only one or two if they're lucky. So, started off as a Lake County problem, then I had more, uh, schools in the state ask for it. Referral GPS, I just got, actually, I have some numbers for you also on this. Uh, this was a, a grant through Department of Justice that I received that has paid for Referral GPS for last school year and the next two school years for free for every student educator and family in Lake County. Referral GPS is a care navigation service. Uh, we've had over fourteen thousand in, uh, individuals use it in some form or fashion in Lake County, all across the county. I'd say about, uh, at least thirty-nine districts have their own link on the website. It has basically gotten twelve hundred providers onto one spot. So you can, if you wanted to pull up something, I need depression. I need someone to, so I can, you know, get seen for depression. It'll pull up all these providers. Uh, we've also paid for three-hundred-and-twenty sessions for students in Lake County who have income or insurance issues. So they've been able to get in, uh, it used to be a month or two sometimes, some were been able to get in four days. Um, and it's, that's been great, you know, for students and just families in general to you, so.
Is that hooked up with Two One One?
Yeah, it is now, yeah. This is this old data, so. So you can just see, districts can self-refer families. So like, Warren does have this. You know, I know they've utilized it, so if they, you know, of an individual here who might need assistance, and, you know, they've kind of exhausted potentially their options here, they can then refer them. And then they'll reach out to, within twenty-four hours if they need a live person. And then schedule and find, you know, by distance, by daytime, et cetera. And then families can self-refer also. Uh, we have a free school safety application. This is kind of like a countywide notification system we're doing, uh, for all of our school districts, and then putting all the law enforcement on. So if a district, you know, or a school goes into lockdown, it'll basically send out a alert to everybody else. And then locally, the superintendent can make that decision if they need to go on lockdown. Because, you know, we've had some issues. I know, you know, like where it started off on the east side and traversed all the way to the west side into McHenry. And, you know, sometimes we've had issues with localities like the mayor's office, you know, saying like, to be, they're on lockdown or something, but that, the school not getting notified. So we'll have local law enforcement on this as well, sheriffs and state police. Uh, Varsity Tutors is a free program that we got for school districts up until June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Uh, this is, um, free twenty-four-seven chat-based tutoring that's available to all students in Lake County. This just happened this summer. I know all of you are School Links users. But what we did was, we got, uh, funding and we got the work-based learning platform for every high school district in Lake County. So basically, we're gonna reimburse you for the work-based learning portion of your School Links purchase that you've made.
Can you tell us what the work-based learning module does for us?
Yeah, so it, um, does things with internships, career opportunities, credentialing, uh, networking. The whole goal, and I can tell you, is I'm working on getting every single business and industry in Lake County on it. Then I'll then make it easier for you as a local high school to then figure out who you want to partner with. But all their contact information will be in there, so then if, you know, you're doing something with manufacturing, you can then, your counselor, whoever, you know, runs that here, can reach out to them to make that partnership. It'll expand because we don't have a one system. The reason why we went with School Links was because the majority of high school districts in Lake County had this. So we just added on the work-based learning. So many more school districts got the work-based learning piece because they did not have it before. And then we're, so, you know, we're reimbursing all the school districts, uh, a dollar per student to cover it because we have the work-based learning light. And they're getting free training this summer. Uh, we're also, so you know, uh, in October thirtieth, we are gonna host the first, like, Lake Navigate Eight, N A V I G number eight, uh, eighth-grade kind of career fair, stealing it from Naperville, District Two-O-three. And we're gonna have over a hundred-and-fifty business and industry partners at Lake County Fairgrounds have the, it aligned to all the career pathway endorsements. So, you know, you have like the tech area, you know, manufacturing, education, healthcare, et cetera. They'll get a pre and post, um, like worksheet that they can do. Uh, we're not just gonna have business cards, we're gonna make sure they're bringing in things that they can actually see and be, you know, demonstrate or even utilize equipment. And then our goal is then have a high school district council there because this is gonna be in October. So then they can also communicate early with their high school district counselor, get information there. And then, you know, as you have your events or try to do your course selections in the winter, you know, maybe January, they'll have all that information, and then they know, maybe I want to do technology, so maybe I can do a technology career pathway endorsement here. Or, you know, maybe I can start here, go to the tech campus, so.
Plenty of those hundred-and-fifty, uh, businesses hire interns?
Yes. The, the, the ultimate goal, uh, I've reached out to some of the bigger, like, like the Trades Association, the Farmers Bureau. I've reached out a bunch of them. The Lake County Partners has partnered with me, Workforce Development. But we're gonna ensure that these businesses have, you know, utilized our high schools.
It's in the evening or daytime?
Uh, for what part? The fair?
Yeah.
The fair is gonna be basically probably eight to three, and we're gonna have like, almost like three sessions during that time. And we've sent out the communication, letting the districts or the superintendents already know. I had to get the date finalized, but I finally got it, so.
That's where I was going. Is this a school-driven thing where they arrive with buses of kids that maybe opt in or whatever? Or is it more parent brings their kid after three P M.?
Yeah, it's gonna be, uh-
The first one.
Yeah, the first one. We thought about, you know, I can tell you that we thought about doing like a day session and then maybe night. But we're gonna start off at least day. Uh, we've, when we talked with Naperville, that's, it went very well there, and then just continue to promote that and make it bigger each year. Um, these are just highlights. I mean, the Educator of the Year Ceremony. So, you know, we, we started that. Uh, this, this past year was our third year doing it. We started off at probably about three-hundred-and-fifty people. In the past two years, it's been eight-hundred people each year. So it's been a nice way to honor, you know, our, all of our school personnel. And each year, we do a, a special recognition for a certain staff. So the first year was like nurses were the guest of honor. The year after is paraprofessionals. This past year was maintenance custodial. And then we'll continue to have all the different categories and then have another special, like, guest of honor next year. And we'll continue with that at the fairgrounds. I mentioned the Splash Conference, which we had here. The Educator Job Fair is something that we've done the past few years. We, we have like, when I was starting out, we, they used to have the job fair at like Vernon Hills High School, and, you know, it'd be jam-packed. You'd just hope to talk to an administrator. And now, you know, we're, the first year we had eighty people. This past year, we had two hundred sign up. I know individual, districts have actually gotten people hired from this, so it's gonna continue. Uh, but we're gonna probably even potentially move it to the University Center next year. I've, I thought about that so that we can then, um, get maybe some of the universities in there too, so educators wanna look at like masters or different programs on how to get the endorsements. Mentioned the Safety Conference, uh, Project Search. Uh, we had a, we took that over from CEDOL and offered it for, uh, students in transition. Um, it provided a, like a career, a work-based learning opportunity at Sedbrook, Clearbrook, and Lincolnshire. And we, and most districts do have, so you know, have transitioned that back to the local district. So we kept it open to help some of the few districts that did not. There are high schools, technically. Um, Early Childhood, one of the things that we're working on, so you know, is like with birth to five, uh, creating like, so wherever you're born at in Lake County, uh, you can get a Q R code, it'll, the information will all go to us, and then we can then send it to the local, you know, elementary district, so then they can have earlier contact and provide information with early intervention, uh, things of that nature. We have quarterly safety meetings, talked about the Leadership Academy. We've continued to offer different ways to, for educators to, you know, further their education through partnerships with different universities and doing like almost a shared model where it doesn't matter where at, what school district you are in Lake County, as long as you're Lake County, you get the discounted rate. So, you know, I'm, I'm sure, you know, some people have taken like masters cohorts here, right? And if you got like eleven people here, you know, they all got tuition discount. But we've taken it like now, every, it's like, you have a cohort, and maybe it's virtual, maybe it's in person, whatever, everybody will get the, the rate. And we've done that with like Early Childhood, S P E D, E L L. Did a Women Empower, uh, coaches network this past year, led by two of our area superintendents. That was, uh, loved by all. Uh, we're continuing to find different ways for Grow Your Own. Uh, we have a twenty-thousand-dollar grant that we're working on trying how we can use C L C D University Center and work with the districts and utilize kind of what you have in place with your C B As, things like that. So that can be lower cost for individuals who want to be teachers. And these are just boards and committees I serve on. Uh, the other thing, so you know, I think this is an important one too, but I'll be sending out, uh, hopefully this week or next week. I created an I G A for a mutual aid agreement, similar to like the Safe School. So for those who've been here for a long time, you know, way back when, every single school district in Lake County signed the Safe School Agreement, right? So they could use the program. You know, obviously, because of, you know, crazy things that happen, like you think back to Highland Park. You know, what if a district is impacted and they need assistance? And, you know, sometimes it comes down to, are you worried you're gonna pay money to another district for a social worker to come in or transportation, things like that? Or this mutual aid agreement is gonna hopefully get every district in Lake County on board. And then we can provide trainings and then support to be called upon if, you know, a district ever experiences crisis.
Do page just do that?
Uh, yeah.
I think that's the model, do page.
Yeah. Yeah, do smart, L C smart. So, I think that's it. Oh, the, I'll tell you this, uh, I don't know if any of you heard this, the Schuler Scholars were impacted that went here. We're hoping, uh, I might be sorting that out and they, they're probably gonna get their money for their scholarships, so we're finalizing that right now.
First of all, welcome to the Board of United Way.
Yeah.
You, you offered a great deal of detail, very impressive detail. I want to jump it up a level to, from micro to macro. And, um, I had this fantasy that I'd be able to create or help create a consortium or coalition of school boards in Lake County for political purposes, to be very candid, to talk to our state legislators and the governor and that sort of thing about a larger issue in terms of how schools are funded and, and how Illinois is way out of whack with most states in the, in the country. Is there any effort going on? Is, I'm gonna ask a pessimistic question with a hopefully an optimistic answer. Is there any effort going on with people that you work with that could have any hope of ever addressing that issue?
The, which part? The consortium or the E B F?
How schools are funded in this state?
So I serve on the, uh, actually, I serve on the Evidence-Based Funding Committee, the Professional View Panel. So I have, that's, um, so anything that you ever all have, I'm happy to bring it up, but that has been discussed. You know, trying to continue to find ways that the state can do the majority of the funding and taking that away from local. But, yeah, I can tell you that I, I've been fighting, not fighting, um, advocating for some other things for some of our Lake County school districts. But I know they continue to look at, they're starting to redo their study this year about E B F and how they're continuing to try to find ways to push it to the state and not, you know, local taxes.
I would just suggest to you, sir, that we have, uh, school boards throughout this state consisting of elected officials. And as a former, current elected official, but former elected official on a different, different level, I know how effective elected officials can be with other elected officials, so I would encourage you to use that resource.
I definitely can.
This is very impressive. Um, I know this is more than many, most regional offices provide as far as support to the local districts. Kudos. I didn't realize half of this stuff was, or a portion of this stuff was even being offered. And I can tell you're, the engine behind it and finding funding for things, so, um, really great work that you're doing.
Been in your position two years?
Three and a few, three and like four months or something. The whole, the whole goal has been one, that obviously, every district is different in Lake County, as everybody knows. Every district's, you know, funding needs or issues that they might have. Our goal has just been to find ways to support, like the mental health piece. Everybody struggled with that. So how can we not burden the local school district or taxpayers? We've gotten probably about five million in grants. If I can secure this Schuler thing, it'd be a lot more. But the whole goal is to try to find ways that, not every, like, not every program's gonna work for everybody. I'll a hundred percent admit, not everybody will use us for every single thing. Some districts will pick and choose, and that's their local decision. But the whole goal has just been access and opportunity. So like, you might need it, you might not. The, like, the mental health, that's been big. The work-based learning system, you know, it's hard to get everybody, you know, in Lake County on the one thing. We were able to do it luckily, and even the ones that weren't, we helped provide ways to. So we've just tried to ensure to make it easier because, you know, he, he serves on tech camp support, things like that. Our tech campus is great. But trying to ensure everybody like has the same opportunities. And like with the work-based learning, if you have access to, hopefully, there's like over ten thousand employers in here, and that's the goal, is get them all on here. And then for them going forward to help, you know, pay for the license for schools, potentially like a cheap cost of like ten bucks or something, then I'll continue to fund it. So like even Referral GPS, that will continue to go on after. I'll just have to search out more funding. The treatment fund's been the hardest thing to keep up, to be honest, so.
Okay, nothing, yeah, thank you very much for your time. I'm just kind of shocked at the number of resources you guys provide. It's very impressive.
Thank you.
A lot of work in three years.
He doesn't sleep.
There's more good things come still, but like I said, uh, we'll continue to, you know, make your, hopefully, your lives easier and ensure that there's things. And I can tell you this too, we are, I mean, my spot's nice in Vernon Hills. I might expand it still. You mentioned like, like, you talked about earlier, like Base Programs, like twenty, you know, you, ten kids in there, you have seventy-six kids. The whole goal, like, that's a smaller number, I can tell you. One, because districts haven't, you know, necessarily used a Safe School as much, right? Because a lot more things have been done in-house, Senate Bill One Hundred, things like that. Because I think at one time, they might have had a hundred-and-twenty kids in there. This is, you know, probably six or seven. Because I think at one time they might've had a hundred and twenty kids in there. And this is, you know, probably six or seven, eight years, you know, ago. But you have like an ALOP, for example. You know, we wanna be able to have an ALOP that everybody could come to in the county, that if you're not serving them here. Or they need to change the scenery, we can then provide that. Or things with like diagnostic testing, you know. To send a student to connections is like four hundred bucks a day. If we could offer that and tie it in with ALOP or a safe school and reduce it to two hundred, that would save districts a lot of money. So we're gonna continue to find ways to have a bigger space still, so that we can serve more kids, so.
Cool.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Um, I did wanna, uh, if it's okay, do a quick overview of our summer facility work. It's just one slide. Pat and Chris, if you guys, if Pat and Chris could come up, I don't know if you guys will have any questions, but then we can answer.
Includes pictures of ducks.
Yeah, no ducks. So here's kind of a big projects that we worked on over the summer. Some of our classroom floor carpet needed replacing, so we're trying to replace that with some, um, high-traffic vinyl. See how that works out, uh, this year. We did have, uh, do some re-carpeting in our lecture halls. You can see the little bit on the left is what the lecture hall looks like when you pull everything out. And then what it looks like there when you put it back in. Uh, life, health, life, safety requirements. As we kind of chip away at those, we redid stair treads and doors. Those are big projects. Outdoors, we've got the roofwork that we're continuing at Oak Plain. The re-turfing of the field looks great. Uh, and will be used consistently by most of our students on a regular basis, not just the football team. Uh, and then part of that re, uh, doing the turf involved replacing some of the fencing that had, uh, come down over the years. Uh, we talked, I've talked about the welcome center at Oak Plain. I'd encourage you to go visit it at some point here during the school year. Uh, because we have new student support services staff, uh, we need some office, new, more office space. Just as we've expanded some of those services. So Ms. Bertola and her team's office were, offices were relocated at Oak Plain. Uh, and then we've secured entrances at both of the campuses. So those main entrances during the day have a double locking, I'd say vestibule or air lobby area. So an individual not only has to get buzzed in for that first door, but then after they check in with a security officer and the security officers. Seen them, they get buzzed through a second door that, uh, should help with, um, just accidental access sometimes, uh, on that first door. So if you have any questions, we're really appreciative of the, uh, summer help. We're able to hire students to help with some of the summer work. That allows our staff to focus on some of these bigger projects. So that was very helpful. Appreciate the board's support there and wanna celebrate just our, uh, maintenance workers for all the work that they did over the summer. If you have any questions about any of that work, we can answer any of those questions. Nope. Okay.
It's great.
And I did have our summer school report. We don't have a, a presentation for that, but if there's any questions on that, I could answer questions of, um, right now.
It set us some more data on that, which was interesting. It's kind of, it's almost like, it does tell us a story about, you know. Cause certain ethnicities are using. Like the recovery at a higher percentage than what they are in the school, which would make sense, cause they're, they're underperforming at a higher level. So I think, I don't think that's too surprising. Hopefully we're gonna do something about that, obviously, but we're working on it.
I do hope that the lunchtime support remediation, um, classes and offerings help. So that not as many students need to use that summer school, uh, programming generally. Uh, there are a lot of good resources and good people working on that problem this upcoming year. So that lunchtime support class should help a little bit with the summer school numbers.
What, what's the, what is college knowledge? There's credit recovery, I understand that. There's advancement, but college knowledge, I didn't.
College knowledge is kind of a, hey, this, if you want to go to college, here's some of the things that you need to do and we can help you understand those steps and maybe even help you with some of the press. Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's very long. It's just a few days.
Couple days.
So it's literally about getting into college.
Getting into college.
You end up actually writing your application to a school so that you have your information together. It's very, my son found it very helpful. I, everyone I've talked to have found it very helpful. A lot of anxiety reduced.
Yeah. But then that's interesting because that was, I know the same thing you did, John, but then also that college knowledge, we also had overrepresentation, you know. How did, do kids just, you know, initiate that they wanna do it or do somebody invite them?
Yeah, I think those are self-initiated, I believe. Yeah. Well, part of it.
Definitely do. Some way to invite, to encourage.
Yeah.
Individual students. Yeah. Anyway.
Done. That's good feedback. Any other thoughts on summer school data? Um, the only other item I have, then we can move on, is, um, we did just have a link in there as a reminder for the school board meeting schedule for the upcoming year. I did, uh, Gina and I realized recently, um, I think when the regional office put out their initial school calendar, this wasn't on it. So we did an update to our school calendar, but we have a, uh, board meeting scheduled for election day. Maybe nobody cares, uh, on the school board, um, but.
Federal Election Day?
Federal Election Day. Yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. So if you have any concerns about that, let Paul or myself know and we can work through that. Just being transparent. Say that again?
I'll host the party.
Sure. Otherwise I don't think I have anything else.
Thank you. We'll go on to the consent agenda. I'm gonna apologize in advance for the names I mispronounce. I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes personnel recommendations per Exhibit A. Numbers one through nine as posted and Exhibit B athletics activities and volunteers. Numbers B one and B two as posted and personnel recommendation number twelve, Koshan Barnes resignation. Number thirteen, Robert Clark resignation. Number fourteen, Shaquana Gaines resignation. Number fifteen, Elhanna Israel resignation. Number sixteen, Daniel Esp, new hire. Number seventeen, Blake Kefner, new hire. The payment of bills dated July ninth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of two million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty cents. And July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of ten million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and eighteen cents. Regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two-four. And the nursing services provider agreement with Bright Star Care for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Anderson. Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Abstain.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
I have five yes and one abstention.
Thank you, everyone. Next up is the twenty-four, twenty-five board committees.
So I asked Paul if we could just spend a few minutes talking about this at the beginning of the year to make sure we're all on the same page. Um, and if I need to get on a different page, you can let me know. So we, the way we're, when I first came on into the school district, um, active board involvement, board committees, conversations at board meetings was a priority. I think it, it continues to be something that all school boards should be consciously thinking about. So I appreciate your desire to continue to improve in this area. So the way I've, um, I'm proposing that we structure committees this year, um, is that we have, uh, four committees. That Paul's asked everybody to try to prioritize in your attendance. The committee of the whole, the finance committee, the policy and the safety committee. Uh, we also, uh, our policy states that the parent teacher advisory committee is a board advisory committee. Uh, so I have to run that like an open meetings act and a handful of board members said they were interested in that. Uh, we've scheduled those, uh, for the most part. Uh, the policy ones are a little wonky, but we've scheduled the committee of the whole, the finance committee, the safety committee and the parent teacher advisory committees. To be on Tuesday evenings this upcoming year. Immediately before closed session of the board meeting starts. The hope is that that, uh, scheduling that upfront lets you put it on your calendar and it keeps it to one night. But at any point, if, if we decide or if you all decide it's just too much time, it's too long of a night, let us know. Talk to Paul about it and we can rethink that. There are a handful of committees that in the past have been board committees, but, um. I'm gonna put them in the category of a superintendent committee that helps us with, uh, open meetings act and attendance. Um, if they're a board committee and we don't have enough people attending, then we have to figure out, are we able to have the meeting or not? Board members can still come to these. Um, and if there's enough board members coming, we'll post it. Uh, but generally, uh, we'll run these as internal meetings. We have curriculum diversity, which a handful of board members have said, hey, I'd like to continue or start being involved with that. Uh, and then insurance and wellness committees are generally internal. Committees, I, I've just got a brief, um, kind of how Roberts rules outlines committees. A committee is a group of people that the board has said, hey, let's get into a topic and let's talk about a topic. Let's investigate it, consider it. When the board doesn't, has a topic that they don't necessarily want to give out to a committee. Or it's the subject matter isn't, uh, constructed enough that it has a, it, it has at that point a specific proposal behind it. Or is, um, structured so that it can be a specific proposal, then a governing body can put together what's called a committee of the whole. So we can have both of those this upcoming year. We've got a handful of committees that are topic-specific. And then we have a committee of the whole, uh, where we generally have used that as, it's not a specific proposal necessarily being presented to be voted on. But maybe we're fleshing out some ideas, trying to promote conversation. And Roberts rules has specific suggestions to do that. So I think that's been working for us. We'll keep. I, my impression is that's been working for board conversation. I feel like I'm able to get some direction from you. Um, so I'm gonna continue to lean into that as we structure these committee meetings. So our finance and safety committee meetings, there are two of those. Uh, and this year we'll use the finance, the first finance committee meeting to do, share some internal financial projections. Um, have some more detailed financial discussions, more than we would do here, uh, just looking at the treasurer's report. And look at the long-term facilities plan and how we're gonna budget for that. That's in November, I think. The second one is late winter, early April or early spring. And that's when we're bringing a third party to do those financial projections and he can spend some time with you going into that. I think we did that in, uh, full board meeting, but I think you'll be able to have better conversation with him, longer conversation if we just, uh, put that in a committee meeting. The safety committee meeting, uh, those happen twice a year. Those involve, uh, individuals from, uh, law enforcement and fire protection. Uh, but we have two of those, uh, the one at the beginning of the years, they're both fairly similar. We're reviewing the safety plan, talking about safety projects. Either current safety projects or upcoming safety projects. Uh, and we'll continue with that pattern. That just gives us some more time to talk about it and a focused conversation. The parent teacher advisory, uh, committee happens once a year. It's in the winter. And that's when we're trying to garner some parent feedback around our handbook. For the most part, it's been tough for us to get parents, uh, but that is the intent of that team, of that meeting. And then policy committee, generally we kind of wait until press gives us recommendations. We're gonna try to get an invite out to you about a month beforehand, uh, in the future. Uh, so that you can get that on your calendar. Our committee of the whole topics, the, it seemed like, uh, the board was saying, hey, let's use some time, let's use our committee of the whole to talk about data every time we have a committee of the whole. Um, and what progress we're making on the strategic plan. So we're gonna focus conversations around that. I do have, when I looked at the conversations we've had in committee of the whole for the last two years. If I took all of those and then laid that next to the plan on a page, and there were about ten of, ten topics that we had discussion on. That weren't specifically, don't have a clear connection to what, to our strategic plan. And they might be more tactical or annual planning type topics. So I have these here on the right. Um, I will still, every time we have a committee of the whole meeting, uh, contact the two board members for specific topics. So I'll contact Susan and Tony, for example, and say, hey, here's one, a topic that we could talk about in the student portion of the committee of the whole meeting. Do you have something you wanna talk about? Paul and I talked about the possibility this year of me just saying like, look, we don't necessarily have a student-specific topic. Or an operation-specific topic or a stakeholder-specific topic. We'll always have some data to review and progress on the strategic plan. But we don't necessarily, we won't necessarily need, I won't feel like I need to have something for each of these sections, uh, every committee of the whole meeting. So I just, I just wanna preview that for the upcoming year. And if there's any other discussion or feedback you'd like to give me on that, I appreciate that. If not, that's okay too.
I'm just gonna say, I, I really like this committee of the whole concepts that we've been doing. I think they're very productive and constructive. And this is the type of work that we've been hoping to do. This is, this is great. And like Danny and I had talked about, I mean, if, if, if there comes a time at one of these meetings, there's nothing to talk about one topic, that's okay. Because we might be able to fill up three hours just talking about operations or three hours just talking about students, cause that's what's important at that point in time. So let's, let's spend that time and not try and come up with reasons why we should talk about facilities when that can be done in a two-minute conversation.
And I would say feedback from the three people watching these meetings or. The public, the three public people. I mean, people have been very supportive of those discussion. It gives them an insight as to what. The school is thinking about and, and how they're wrestling with topics. And I know even as a community member, when it started, it was like refreshing to hear. Everyone's thoughts as opposed to just their votes.
And I think going along those lines is really good for, you know, the, the massive audiences we get here. They get a good chance of hearing what the board wants to do, what the direction the board wants to take the school. So it doesn't just sound like this is what the superintendent wants to do. The direction's coming from the board on a lot of these changes or topics. So I think that's very good.
So like a, a month or so ago, we were talking about. Forming some kind of advisory committee so that we'd have more perspective from beyond the board, right? Parents and families and that. Is there a way that this could also help to fill that gap? I don't know if we would wanna come to a safety committee meeting besides us, but if we're already having all these, you know, different settings where we're getting together, I wonder if there's a way to use that.
Yeah, um, I think they could. Some school districts or school boards will appoint community members to, um, committees. Sometimes that's in larger school districts, um, with maybe more active community involvement. Some, I have seen school boards who encourage, uh, members of the community that are interested in being on the school board to be, to come to committee meetings or be actively part of committee meetings. You could also as a school board task me and just say, hey, Danny, these are, we all, we want more people at the board meetings. Committee meetings sometimes are a really specific and tangible way to invite, to reach out and invite community members because we know the topics. We know there's gonna be discussion. It's a little bit more.
Interest-based.
Yeah, it's a little bit more engaging than just listening to votes. So you could ask me to do some back or some behind the scenes work. To just engage with some community members and some parents to invite them, uh, to some of the committee meetings.
I'm thinking some of the, going along those lines, maybe some of the committee of the whole meetings. So we're gonna talk about, if we know ahead of time, we're gonna have a talk, a topic that's very strategic. What do we wanna do long-term for X that's gonna impact students long-term? Maybe that'd be something that we'd really wanna promote to a core set of parents or community, community members saying, hey, we'd really like you to come to this meeting. It's gonna be all conversation-based and we'd really like your feedback on what you heard to make sure that what we're thinking, where we need to go as a district is. What you think we should be doing as a district.
Especially some of our upcoming projects.
Absolutely. You read my mind.
So a, a committee of the whole meeting, if somebody else came, they would still be observing the meeting, right? But a committee meeting, somebody else could participate in or?
Um, I believe, and Steve might have the most knowledge of this, so correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe part of the benefit of a committee of the whole meeting is that, um, it's supposed to be structured in a looser feel of environment to promote dialogue. And so you could invite probably easier.
They can contribute on a much more free basis other than like public comment type thing. If you change the rules and allow interaction, they can't vote, obviously, but you can. If you change the rules and allow interaction, they can't vote, obviously, but you can change the rules to allow interaction from the gallery.
Well, and if I remember correctly, we're not beholden to Roberts Rules, too, so we could probably adjust it the way we need to.
I think we say we are. If we specify that we're not, we don't have to be.
Policy says we use it as a.
Guideline.
As a guideline.
We could also move the public content to the end of the Committee of the Whole meeting. That way, if somebody's out there, they've got some comments that they want to give, they can give us our feedback right then.
I would, I would suggest that you open it up enough so that the topic is being discussed and be open to the half-dozen people that are out there to discuss it at the time, rather than have them take notes and come up with the end, their comments at the end. Just a thought. It works pretty well that way. The other thing I might suggest would be an outreach on our part. If one or more of us were to attend the Gurnee Park District meeting, or the Gurnee Village Board meeting, or the Warren Soundship meeting, or SRA, or any number of organizations, and specifically invite them to come to some of us. These are community leaders, they know people.
I, I definitely could maybe put together, most, I could start working earlier, usually I've kind of reached out to the board members a couple of weeks before Committee of the Whole meeting. I could start a couple of weeks earlier than that, and if we've got topics lined up a month ahead of time, then I would be happy to reach out to some community leaders, some families, parents. I'd be happy to do that, if that's what you guys would like me to do.
And again, maybe to expand, but if we were talking about youth services, maybe we'd invite, you know, Elmer Phelous and a couple of his board members, because they have the teen center. If we're talking athletic facilities, we could invite Susie Caravilla, people from her group. I mean, you, if you target shoot, you're going to get a certain amount of participation, and hopefully, we could cross poll on it a little bit.
I'm thinking, depending what the topics are, maybe we could send an extra invitation out to some of the, the union leaders here within the building, and saying, we know you've got a lot on your plate, but we think this might be a good meeting to show up to. We'd appreciate your, we would appreciate your input or your observation of where we're going. I think sometimes we go down the path so far, then all of a sudden, there's, you know, feedback from the union saying, nobody told us, what's going on?
Nobody told us, yeah.
It's like, okay, we're all in the public, so if we think they're going to, yeah, let's just make sure that there's some meetings they should try to attend to.
They'd appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not asking them to go to every meeting, but maybe just a couple particular ones.
Yep, I will, I, I can do that. That's doable. I appreciate the feedback. Anything else on committees? Okay.
Thank you very much. On to action items. The first one is approval of the Student Parent Handbook. Any questions on this? If not, I move to approve Amendment 1 to 2425 Student Parent Handbook as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Carlson. Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Six yes, motion carries.
Next up is an approval on the Custodial Services Contract. Any questions on that? Would we like Ms. Green to come up and give us a half-hour presentation on this contract?
No. Sure she would love that.
With that being said, I move to approve the Custodial Services Contract Addendum with GSF USA Inc. for summer day porter coverage at the Almond and Oak Plain campuses as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Pope. Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Six yes, motion carries.
Next up is an authorization to enroll in a purchasing co-op. I believe this is something new for us. So are there any questions on this? I move to authorize the administration to enroll the district with Sourcewell and approve purchasing cooperative through the state of Illinois.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Pope. Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Six yes, motion carries.
Anything else the board needs to talk about? If not, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Miss, motion by Schultz, second by Carlson. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Six yes, motion carries.